All right. Good evening, everyone. It's just about seven o'clock. I'd like to call the council's regular meeting of August 19th to order. If everyone could please stand, I'm going to ask Councilman Hurley to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you. So we do have a presentation tonight. White Oak Redevelopment Project. I believe we have several of the parties here. Who is going first? Oh, sorry. You could talk, yeah. I'm holding up.
No problem. Mr. Chairman and fellow commissioners, Mark Lovely with the principal of Manafort Newport Realty LLC. We're here tonight to give you an update on the White Oak project. We've been doing quite a bit of due diligence since we have been selected as a developer, working with the town on biweekly meetings, doing some geotech work ourselves as well, and then working on redevelopment and redesign of the property per the geotech work that has been done and some of the floodplain differences that we found out too. So basically, I'm just going to go through a recap of what was planned when we originally and what's planned now, and then we can open up the questions in the handout I gave, so it was a little bit easier. You have the first one, which will be what we had planned on doing when we originally did it. And then the second one, you'll see, is this one here, which is our new layout here. We feel the new layout is much more cohesive with the downtown of Plainville, not so large with four-story buildings and everything like that. So I'll go through just a little bit about that. So original development plan, we had commercial and medical office space of about 19,000 square feet. But where you see here where Building C was, we didn't have adequate parking for that. So that building there got cut down a little bit. So that's really the differences in the square footage. It brings this down to 10,117 square feet now, which is 8,883 square feet less than the original. Industrial space, we've actually increased the industrial space because we thought about taking Building A originally and making it into some different offices and stuff. So that actually increased by about 14,145 square feet from 12,500 to 26,045. And that's the size of the existing building. And what we've done too is we've had an architect come in and adds built all these buildings. So some of them were different in square footages before from some of the information that we had in the past on them too. One of the biggest ones change is the apartment buildings. Right now, we have had about 134,640 square feet because Buildings E and F were four stories tall. With doing the geotech work and going down and not finding good soils for over 10 feet deep and it all been filled in, our engineers and our geotech company and our architects said there's no way these soils can support a four-story building. So what we basically did, and you'll see a picture in your packet too, designed them for a two-story building, but what we're doing is doing multiple buildings now. So it's going to feel more like a village effect when you pull in there. It won't be one big huge building that's going to be overpowering the downtown. So basically, over by the fire station, we have one building there. And then as we come through the almost like a boulevard area that goes between the industrial and the front commercial going out to the back parking lot of the industrial, that'll be like a boulevard with parking, we'll have five buildings on that V-shaped area there. And we'll have some gazebo, some grassed areas between them. So we feel it's going to feel more like driving through a downtown. The buildings will not be the exact same color every building inside. We want them to feel a little bit like a downtown, so we don't want to do every single one the exact same color as well. So basically, what we had, we had 334,640. Now we're at 74,276, which is a decrease of 60,364 square feet. Now, I'll make a note of that because the old building had a lot of, about 25% of the 134,640 was common space. This type of unit doesn't have any common space. So basically, if you take 25% off of that, you're looking at not too far off. It's just a different design on the buildings, the way we're designing them. In our apartments, now we had 176 at one time. Now we have 110, which is a difference of about 66, just because of the stories that we cannot go up. Out of those 110, we will have 10% of those will be affordable per the grant from the state of Connecticut for the Brownfields grant, which will be 80% AMI, which will be a total of about 11 units in the whole project. Also, what we've done in the project too, to support where our grade difference is going to be, because we need to pick this area up from where the back is by the river, about six feet for the floodway, which we are going back and forth with DEP, with the DEC director right now, and we have to make an application for that. We're using the back of the carports that we're putting in as a retaining wall for that to be able to support the grade difference for the material that is contaminated, that is going to come up here and go underneath the roadways and stuff like that. That'll have a liner that will protect that for the public. Right now, we're, it's not on your proposal here, or not on your, is about 12,320 square feet of carports too, that we, like I say, will be using the back for retainage. That's basically the report that I have, so I'm happy to answer any questions that anybody has.
All right. Thank you. Is there any questions or comments? Anything from Town Manager at all?
Well, I could just add that to Mark's comment, you know, we have been engaged at the table in various meetings with the state, trying to get the whole geotechnical, environmental issues and this floodplain flood zone issue, you know, finalized. So, you know, it's a work in progress, and I appreciate the time and the detail that they've given us and our staff to review and look at everything. So, you know, I think it's still going to be, you know, a great project, and we're just looking forward to get those sign-offs from the state and get this project, you know, full speed ahead.
All right. And so from our perspective, we're just modifying the original agreement.
Well, it's really reaffirming that, in my opinion, and again, you know, Morris has been in on these discussions as well, that this is essentially the same project and then no substantial changes, and so that would say that, you know, apples to oranges kind of thing. It's just the fact that the environmental issues and the fact that the soils are not what we thought they were, or the developers thought they would be, or anybody, you know. So you just can't get that kind of density, you can't get that fourth floor. You can't get that with the soils there. So I think I applaud their, you know, efforts to, you know, stay within the original concept, which I think is right before you, and, you know, it just, the numbers are a little bit smaller.
Yep. And just the, what you originally called the Town of Plainville recreational area. Any idea, like, do we, do we end up with a little more acreage?
You probably will end up at about the same because of the roadways that we have to put in and the footprints we're doing with the grates and everything like that. But you will still end up with the same amount of area.
And do you remember what the, I can't, I tried to look for it. I couldn't find how many acres was back.
If I remember, it was almost three or four acres total. Seven? Seven acres total.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, we're excited about that too. Definitely.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Two questions.
Yes.
Will there be a separate driveway for the industrial building?
Yes, there will be. That will be the one between the Town Hall right now. That'll be the entrance there to get in with the bays. And then our plan on the other side between the apartments, we'll have some office parking, put the office entrances on the other side, so they won't be the same as the apartments.
Okay. And my other question is, with the, with the new plans, is there any reduction in municipal parking?
No, there's no reduction in municipal parking because we're going to wrap some around the backside.
Good. Thank you.
No problem.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
So you had reduced the square footage almost in half, and then the number of units by 66. So are the apartments that, the units that you're looking at, they're going to be under 700 square feet each?
No, they'll range anywhere from about 650. Studios will be about 600 to about 750 for one bedrooms, and then we'll be closer to about nine or 950 for two bedrooms.
Okay. And so one or two parking spaces, depending on whether it's a one bedroom or two bedroom?
Hundred percent right. We'll be anywhere, average, I would say, will be about one and a half parking spaces per unit. That's pretty much what zoning usually is there too. I'll make a note too, off of this square footage that we've come down, 74,276, almost 62,000 of that is hallways and common areas that we're getting rid of. So square footage of the apartments are only about 10,000 difference. It's more the common areas and stuff like that that we're getting rid of.
Okay. Yeah, that sounds about right, because I remember last time we had a meeting about it. It sounds like the units are basically the same size as you were planning on before.
Yep, hundred percent correct. Just the way of building, the way we're going to do these, and with the geotech work, they'll be a little bit more, actually, you get a little bit bigger apartments because you're taking away some of the common area to do that, which is better.
Okay. Awesome. Thank you.
We will have two, a question about that too. We will have in our existing building of the, that we don't have on here, where the main building of the White Oak buildings now, we're actually going to make our common spaces, like our workout rooms, our function rooms, and everything in those areas. So we won't be taking away from the apartments, which it would have before in the building.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
All right. Any other comments or questions? I just, and this might not be related specifically to the redesign, but where are we in the process? I know we're all very anxious to hand this over to you guys and let you start doing your work. But is there a quick update on remediation is complete, 95% complete?
Remediation and, I'll let the Town Manager help out with this one too. But remediation, the next round of grant money has been awarded. Right now, we're getting ready, I think you guys are getting ready to go out to bid. But what we do have to do is work with DECD, with the, with DEP on this flood issue. Thank God, DECD stepped up and said, "We want to be the applicant," which is very good for the town and very good for us as developers. And everybody, I want to say, town staff, state staff, have been excellent to work with. I mean, it's really been a team collaboration to get to where we are today. So I think it's going to take a little bit of time because DEP doesn't move very fast. But, so we're going to push as fast as we can because we want to get this thing going.
Yep. Yeah, we do too.
Mr. Chairman, so my understanding is as far as where they are in the process right now, they're looking for the council to support with the plan that they've shown you, their vision right now and the plans that they have. These aren't final. They got to go back to deep. And what they were really looking for was a vote of confidence, which will help them if the council supports it and DECD being the applicant. That was really the purpose of this tonight. It's more of a resolution. It's not, we're not really saying, okay, we approve the plans.
Yeah.
It's just that we're all, yeah, that this is the way it's got to be because of the limitations of the site that they've been talking about.
Okay.
Also, I'll make a note too that the White Oak building has already been remediated and all the chemicals, everything's been taken out of that. So our goal is, if we can get through the next step, we would actually like to start taking part into that building and getting that going ahead of time of the remediation of the back parcel.
Okay. All right. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right. Any other comments or questions? Well, if anyone has one, we have their phone numbers and emails, so we can certainly, we know where to find you. So anything else from the town side?
Just that there is a resolution that'll be taken up later on in the, in the meeting. You know, I would, they're welcome to stay. I wouldn't torture them, but, you know.
Probably don't have anything else to do tonight, but yes, you're welcome to stay. But we do have a pretty heavy schedule tonight, so. But thank you. If everyone's all set, we'll move on to the public hearing. At this point, I will ask the town clerk to read the call to the public hearing, please.
Thank you.
Good night. Thank you.
Notice is hereby given that the Plainville Town Council will hold a public hearing at 7:00 PM on Monday, August 19th, 2024, in the municipal center to consider use of coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds associated with the American Rescue Plan Act for additional appropriation for the removal of underground storage tanks at the roadway's fueling station in an amount not to exceed $161,210, dated at Plainville, Connecticut, this 15th day of August, 2024.
Thank you. So we've been talking about this for a little while, but I don't know, Mr. Town Manager, if you just want to give like a quick 30 seconds again why we're here asking for this?
Right. Roadways facility and the, the order that we're under to get those tanks removed and our first blush through in terms of the bidding process or quoting process didn't pick up everything that we needed. So as we explained at the last meeting, we would come to this public hearing seeking additional appropriation to close the gap in terms of the funding to get this project out and get it, get it done, so that we can meet the timelines. And, you know, the environmental and design around the tanks, I think there were a lot of questions that we answered with respect to how that design and what it was going to include. And so I think we've met and answered all of those questions or concerns, and I think we've got a really good design and quote at this point. And we're ready to move forward, ready to proceed with the process. And again, the sooner we can get to this, the better, as, you know, we wouldn't want any kind of catastrophic event or the tank to, you know, deteriorate while we're waiting to go. So these are the numbers that we, we need, 161,210, to close the gap.
Okay. All right. So at this point, unless there's a question or a comment from the council, I'll open up the public hearing. If anyone wishes to address the public hearing, please step forward to the podium, give your name and address. Mr. Kislik.
John Kislik, 65 Forest Hill Avenue. Well, I guess there's really nothing else to say about this project. It's going to go through, it's mandated, I guess, by state and federal regulations. But I have some comments on, on the financial part. I know that this federal money or whatever, it's, it's actually taxpayer money in the long run. But what, what was the total of this project? Because this is the second approval. I believe the first one was 300 something thousand. This is another 160, what, do you have the total?
I believe the total is 461,200. We've, we've already assigned 300,000, I believe, and this is the balance. So you're correct.
My comment is, I guess we're.
Unless I'm wrong, I don't, that is.
491, 450.
491.
And 92 cents.
My comment is, I guess we're lucky that we have these funds and it doesn't have to come out of our budget. And that's all I, that's all I have to say about that. And I hope the project goes through good, there's no hidden other fees, and that everything works out good with the plan that they have for these different tanks above ground and stuff. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to address the public hearing? Last time, anyone wished to address the public hearing? All right. Seeing no one, we will close the public hearing, and we can move to item number three, minutes of the previous meeting.
Mr. Chair.
Councilwoman Christopher.
I would like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the July 15th, 2024 regular meeting and the August 12th, 2024 special meeting.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, item four, announcements and reports. Anyone?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I did attend the Conservation Commission meeting last Wednesday, August 14th. Just a couple of quick things. They elected their officers. They actually reelected the current slate, Marge Burr as chair, Jeff Seppco as vice chair, and Randy Paz as secretary. They discussed a number of matters, Tomaso Nature Park, Sustainable CT, which we're now a member, and some of the steps that can be taken to, you know, follow the program of that, of Sustainable CT. And also some issues, continued issues related to Pateroski Pond, such as the discarded fishing line, which, you know, has been discussed before, and looking at some new ways to have people be a little more careful about that. And lastly, river cleanup is scheduled for September 28th on the side of West Cemetery, going down to the pond and the Aquaback River area. And that's it.
All right. Thank you. Is there anyone else with any announcements or reports? I'll just do a quick reminder that the Balloon Festival is this weekend, Friday and Saturday. If anyone's interested in volunteering, please let the town know. You could probably, I know there's a website they have. I'm sure you can call Town Hall as well, and they'll find, put you on the list. But looking forward to it. Knock on wood, the weather looks pretty good for the weekend right now. So hopefully, all this rain we got the last couple of days is paying off for this upcoming weekend. Anyone else with anything they would like to share? All right. We will move now to item five, appointments and resignations. I don't think there were any that we had going in. Is there any that came up over the weekend that we need to take care of? All right. We will move on. Board of Education liaison is not here tonight. And we are up to report of the town attorney. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. I have a really brief report. We've got about five tax appeals left. Two of them, I think, are tentatively resolved. We got, that'll give us three, and then we'll be done with the tax appeals. I think that they've gone fairly well. That's it. I have nothing else.
All right. Any comments or questions for the town attorney this evening?
Thanks.
All right. Thank you for your report. Item eight, report of the town manager.
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, council members. I have quite a few items here. I'll try to get through orderly fashion if you want. I can stop and pause between each one, or just go right through and.
Why don't we go one by one unless, yeah, we'll, I know there's a lot tonight we're talking about.
Sure. I can do that. Item one is ReWorld, otherwise known Covanta update. And I was hoping to have Susan Lonzac, I invited her, who is Director of Health for the Health District. And unfortunately, something came up last minute and she was not able to be here with us tonight. She did provide some information and a letter that it sent out to the council with respect to some of the issues. And I was hoping that she could tackle two major items here, or at least enlighten us in terms of what she knows about both the existing issue of noise or the, you know, low-frequency humming issue that's been consistent and something that the Covanta, for purposes tonight, the facility has been working on. And, and that is actually falls, I believe, under the Bristol Health District that is overseeing that and working to make modifications. I've done a study, waiting to, to see what they're going to do with respect to investment. I think they have committed to doing that. So I was hoping to hear more, but I'll certainly entertain any questions and convey those questions tonight. You know, happy to forward those on. But that is a work in progress, and we'll see how, what final adjustments and modifications they make to the stack or whatever they need to do. I don't have the level of detail to know the, the plant and what exactly they're proposing yet. But other than they're obviously looking at to reduce or to modify in some way to eliminate that source of sound that's coming and emanating from there. The most recent issue, the second issue, the concerns about the request to modify their permit to take in medical waste. And so there is additional information that I have with respect to the state that I think you may have as well. But in the matter, this is, the way I understand it, a permit already exists and that they are seeking modification to add, I believe, eight to 10% of their waste stream to be medical waste. And that requires a deep approval. The response from communities, I think, has been high with respect to coordinating the state, and they're going to propose a public hearing on the matter. And again, is deep, we do not have a regulatory role in this, nor do the health districts, from my understanding. So there will be, what I understand, will be a site visit for the hearing officer to view the site location and features relevant to the subject applicant. That'll be happening on October 9th at 10:00 AM at the facility. There's a public hearing set for October 22nd for 6:30 via Zoom. The public hearing will be held to receive comments from the public on the above referenced matter. Members of the public will be afforded three minutes to speak. Written public comments may be submitted to the hearing officer up to 5:00 PM on November 1st, 2024. And then a evidentiary hearing will be convened in the matter on November 7th at 9:00 AM via Zoom. So that's the scheduled sequence that I have for the medical waste situation. So it is something that obviously is being monitored, being, being studied. And again, I will do what I can to gather more information and collect specific questions that the members may have, pass that on to our Health District and get you a response. But that, that is what I have on those two matters.
Any comments or questions?
You know, I had a number of questions, Michael. Should I forward those to you and have you forward them to Susan?
Absolutely.
And that way, when she does come, she would have gotten these questions in advance. Also, I did watch the Southington Town Council meeting that they held on, on August 12th online. And I noticed that they did have the, I guess he's a relatively new executive director of the Bristol Facility Policy Board. And he spoke as well, and you may want to consider that, having him come as well. Both he and Susan spoke at the Southington Town Council meeting.
Yes, and we could potentially have a special meeting if necessary to do that.
Yep. Yeah. And that's what I think, you know, and just finding out this afternoon Sue wasn't able to make it is to try and, I think it's important that we do sit down with Sue and just get her thoughts and her comments on this. And I also know going forward, we do have a little time with October being the public hearing. But been in contact with some elected officials in Southington and Bristol, and I don't know if a combined message from the three towns or if we do a combined message and then each town does an individual message. But some coordination, it sounds like, you know, Bristol folks were looking, or Bristol Council was looking for some support from the neighboring towns as far as communicating too deep about this situation. So the good news is we do have a couple of months to put something together. So a special meeting, maybe, you know, that Monday after Labor Day. I don't know what day, is that the 10th, 9th? I don't know if that'd be September 9th, maybe? And, you know, okay. And then, in the meantime, we could coordinate. But yeah, I mean, we have to figure it all out right now. But if everybody on the council thinks that's okay.
We'll send out some, yeah, look at the calendar, send out some dates and see if we can put that together. And then obviously, the information we learn from there can better guide us in how we respond or craft a, whether it's coordinated effort or separate effort in response.
All right. Thank you. All right. Any other comments or questions regarding ReWorld or Covanta? All right. One down. Let's go to number two.
Yes. Number two item is the emergency chimney repair at the library. So I'm trying to send out, you know, information as I can. I'm sorry, you probably also, members probably picked it up on social media as well. But the building and grounds department is aware of it, had been monitoring it for some time, and understood that there was a, a gap with this chimney. And really, it's a, it's a fake chimney in terms of sort of a facade, if you will, covering the, the pipes. But that gap between the, the building remained pretty much the same. You know, they were for, for a long time, until, until recently. They were monitoring it and had seen that it looked like it was coming a little bit further. So they were up there measuring it, decided that their strategy would be to make a bracket to help stabilize the chimney. to help stabilize, uh, the chimney. And, um, in that timeframe, um, there are obviously, uh, residents and patrons that saw the same thing and it looked to them like it was, you know, coming off the, the building. So, um, Building and Ground Superintendent, uh, took the next step, which was to call in, um, a contractor to further investigate and discovered that the foundation, uh, that the chimney was built on was really suspect and, uh, of concern and likely to, to fail or have the chimney pull away entirely from, from the building, creating a potential, uh, major liability. So we called the contract in, evaluated the structure. It was determined that, you know, an emergency repair, uh, would be, would be made. And then they began the process as already done and I've incorporated pictures for you, uh, on that subject that they pretty much took it down brick by brick and, uh, cleaned up that, that area. So, unfortunately, is one of the, one of those things, uh, that is, you know, unforeseen. We thought, you know, it could, could limp along with a bracket and stabilization, but, um, there might've been, you know, just some sort of, uh, event, uh, that, you know, caused the foundation to deteriorate. But, um, it, again, uh, quick action, I think, and, um, the right one, so that we could avoid any catastrophic failure and/or potential injury to anybody or anyone or property. As you know, those cars park very close to, to, to the building. So, um, that was, uh, undertaken and, um, will continue to rebuild and put it back together. So with minimal interruption to the, uh, library and operations and, and staff, so.
All right, any, uh, comments or questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Mike, do you know, that was on the, uh, from the pictures that I saw, that was on the addition to the library, right? The new portion?
Uh, yes, this side facing closest to, to Town Hall here.
Do we have a year?
You can see in the main entrance.
Do we have a year for that? I mean, I remember it being done, but I just can't remember how, if it was more than 20 years ago or?
I don't have a year, I can find out.
Okay. All right. I just don't know if we would be able to go back to whoever did the work on it? And, you know, get some, something.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Is there any estimation on when they'll be done?
Um, no, I don't have that. I have to, uh, we'll meet with, uh, stat, well, I'll be out. Andy will be meeting with staff tomorrow and get that answer for you.
Thank you.
Yes.
From what I understand, uh, they should be done taking down the chimney, putting a temporary replacement in. And then what we, what we will have to do is, um, design a replacement for it, which we're going to look to do in-house. If we can't, we'll engage a professional architect, design, uh, and then go forward with a bid to construct it. So that's going to take some time.
All right, any other comments or questions regarding the chimney?
Real quick.
Yes.
It won't affect the heating system, anything they'll?
No, not at all. What we're looking to do is, um, you'll see, we're going to create two ducts that are brought up so that the exhaust is still safely, um, exhausted from the building. And, uh, it wouldn't impact the building operations at all.
Okay, that, that was my concern, yeah. Thank you.
All right, unless there's any other comments or questions, we'll move to item three.
Item three is the Pine Meadow at the Canal Condominium Association, the request for rebate, uh, that we've, um, discussed in the past. And just to give a quick overview, um, they're located 15 West Pine Way. They'd requested tax abatement from the town based on their claim that they provided a public benefit to the community in terms of their walking path and view to the canal. Uh, so, um, we began, um, discussions, um, around, uh, that public access and what they felt was a requirement, uh, for bird sanctuary and, and trail within the complex and began to try and identify whether or not there was, uh, you know, a value to that and came up with, um, a, uh, public benefit value that we discussed. We, based on calculating a hundred dollar per unit, 36 units, 3,600 a year for 10 years. Um, that was all discussed. The association, uh, was in general agreement, but, uh, wanted to or indeed, indeed counter by requesting 16,000 in the, in the first year. And so, um, a site walk was, was undertaken at the request of Council Moranti. We went out there, took a look at it and, um, with, uh, Planner Mark DeVoe and myself. And we, we walked and, uh, you know, uh, showed that the path is really a very short path, uh, non-maintained. Although the, the discussion was that the town had maintained it for a few years, uh, and then discontinued. Really, no indication that there's any interest or any activity at all outside of maybe members from the condominium association using it. Uh, it really is a, I would say, a path to nowhere. Uh, it, it just, it, it, it's literally a very short little path. You would, you, you, you'd have to know exactly, someone would have to tell you exactly, you know, where that is. And, and when you look, you, you, because it hasn't been maintained. There's still some stone dust that was originally put down there. But, um, and then to, 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 to see the canal itself is, is, um, because there really hasn't been any maintenance within the, within the canal itself. It's, uh, overgrown. You would just think it's a, you know, potentially a wetlands or something like that. So maybe potentially there's a, you know, bird watching. Um, but, you know, at, at this point, uh, there's not much more information I can give you other than the process and Mark, uh, DeVoe was very, uh, I think, uh, articulate in, in talking about the, the process of how the, uh, project came, uh, to be approved. But there wasn't any, um, you know, um, requirement. It was just something that was, was, was agreed to and, um, without, I would say, any, uh, expectation of compensation. So, uh, I'll leave it at that. Um, I, council's call and
Yeah, no, I think it's, yeah, I think it's now, it's time for the council to have some discussion around this. I know we started this process back in March. But, uh, we all know, we've talked about it enough. We know what the proposal is. We have a counterproposal, but, you know, as far as the council sitting here and discussing it, does anyone have any comments or questions? Anyone want to kick it off?
I'll, I'll kick it.
Okay.
Uh, I, I don't really see the value in continuing to, um, have any, anything to do with the, the path. I just don't, if it's not used, I don't really, um, I don't really think, you know, that we need to, um, enter into anything with the condo owners.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
You know, um, Mark DeVoe did pull out the original documentation from 2005 with the developer. And, you know, it does grant the, um, public access, but there was no mention of any kind of financial compensation for it. And I don't think that, after the fact, that we should establish that. We have, have done other easements. We recently did one, uh, for public access to a small strip of property along the Quinnipiac River. And there's no mention of financial compensation for that public benefit. And I don't think we can start retroactively granting compensation when it was not part of the original documentation. As Town Manager said, the path is, is very short and part of it is overgrown with grass at this point. There's still some part of it that has the cinder. And apparently the town did do their agreed upon diligence to go clear it and has not done so for a few years. So at the most, I would see if we could establish, you know, a nominal, uh, sum, uh, for the town not, um, keeping up the maintenance and then have the town continue to, uh, to do that maybe on a year. It's just, I think it says from time to time here in the documentation. You know, it'd be, it's, it's not a big job. It's a very small area. But, uh, that would be the only sort of compensation, you know, and obviously it would not be a large amount of money, but not for the public benefit itself.
Okay, anyone else, any comments or questions?
Uh, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, go ahead.
I'd, I'd like to second what Councilwoman Tompkins just said. Um, I don't see any public benefit. And when I, when I asked if they, what the condo association has paid over the years for, to clean this up, they couldn't give me a number because they haven't spent any money. If they, if we were going to give a, negotiate an agreement with them, it should have been done 20 years ago, not retro.
All right, anyone else? Anyone else? Um, so, you want to say anything, Dave?
No.
Call someone in Underwood, no?
No comment.
You know, yeah, I think, you know, in hearing some of the comments, um, it's sounding like certainly what we have in front of us as far as the, you know, a hundred dollars per unit, um, per year, over 10 years is something clearly, the council's not in favor of moving forward with that. And I guess then the next question is, is there a sum less than that you're interested in? Or is this something that you just don't think the council should be? You know, any financial number of any dollars attached to this at all?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Yeah, I, I just don't think we should set, start setting a precedent for something like this. It just doesn't, it doesn't make sense, you know, if, if we do that for them. For something that has no value and we don't, no one uses. I mean, who's gonna, who's gonna come out of the woodwork and start asking for different things? I, I just, I just don't think it's a good idea.
Okay, no, that's a valid statement. Anyone else?
I, I, Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
I completely agree. Um, this is a, this is a precedent that we should not be setting. Um, I have an easement in front of my property. Am I, am I entitled to a rebate on my taxes? No.
No, I, you know, I, Mr. Chair, I think we're pretty much, I don't know, for everybody who's spoken, it is an agreement that there really can't be any, should not be any compensation for the public benefit. You know, and anything I propose would be very tiny, you know, or, or suggested. I don't want to even say propose.
I'll go to Councilman Hurley. Do you want to say something?
I just want to say that, you know, I feel that there is some way that we need to take care of this problem as, as a group. Um, I, I think that we need to, uh, give to them support and help, based on the fact that the pipe failed. Any further, uh, outside of the pipe itself, no. But I think that the, the, the pipe itself needs, needs, uh, needs to be fixed, needs to be repaired. Um, it's, we, my, myself, I pay, I pay, every year I pay for coverage of my pipes. And I, I don't, and I'm sure that they pay for the coverage of their pipes. And I just feel that the, that it's something that we should be doing is, is taking care of it one way or another.
Can, can you just explain, because that's not included in this package? And I know that they may have a problem with their pipe, but it has, it's not really related to the path, is it?
It's,
They want money from us so that they can fix a problem that's not related to this pathway. Is that my understa, correct understanding?
Yes.
Well, sort of, yeah.
Yeah.
The pipe goes through the, through the pathway that they're, that they're dealing with. And then I, I feel that the, you know, they're, we've, we've offered them 36,000 in a, in a package where 18,000 was, was supposed to be for this pipe and the rest of it was to be for a couple of other things that had gone wrong. But the, the couple of other things that have gone wrong have nothing to do with, with, um, the pipe that has a, a hole in it. And I just feel that it, it needs to be, I feel it needs to be taken care of one way or another. That's, that's about it.
All right, thank you. Uh, anyone else with any comments or questions? Oops, sorry about that.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Um, I'm in agreement with Councilmembers Tompkins, Getteman and Moranti. I do not think there should be any compensation for this.
All right. Anyone else? Nobody has to talk. Well, I, I think, you know, to summarize clearly, you know, I, I don't think this is something that we're going to add to the agenda tonight or move forward in this, with the proposal we have in front of us. Certainly the council is not in favor of moving forward with it. So, you know, I think we've discussed it enough tonight. And at this point, I would just say that, you know, what the proposal in front of us is, we're not going to act on it. You know, that doesn't mean it can't come up at a later time. But, uh, certainly at this point, I think the proposal that's in front of us is, is we're going to take that off the table then, if I'm hearing everybody correctly. And, um, you know, at that point, we could probably move on then unless anyone has any other comments or questions.
I'm good.
All right. All right, why don't we move on to item number four then?
Sure. Mr. Chairman, item number four is, uh, just a brief, quick update on the landfill. I wanted to, um, just tell you what's happening there, that we're completing the capping process and actually have completed the physical, physical, uh, capping of the landfill. And we're transitioning at this point to the sort of regulatory review and monitoring phase with the state of Connecticut as these projects have a long tail, uh, in terms of monitoring, as you may know. The town is working with both LEA and Tigon Bond on the stewardship plan as directed by Connecticut Deep. And, um, at this point, I've been looking at, uh, entertaining, uh, adaptive reuses, uh, for that landfill now that it's capped. And, uh, one of those potent, potential adaptive reuses, uh, is a solar array or solar farm, if you will, uh, ground mounted, uh, solar farm. And I'm working with the Office of Innovative Partnerships and Planning at Deep. Uh, they have, um, reached out, heard about the project and asked if, uh, they could assist. Uh, so I'm definitely going to take that meeting. It's just early, uh, informational gathering, uh, purposes, um, just to see if that would be permitted, if it would be permissible and to gather, uh, information, um, you know, from them about how to, how to proceed. So, well, I just wanted to, uh, sort of float the idea, plant the seed here, uh, for the council that I think we can turn, uh, you know, a, um, lighted, uh, landfill, uh, sort of dead zone into something that could be, um, uh, a revenue source for the town. And, cause you really can't do much of anything, uh, on a, on a landfill. But this, this is one I'm told that, uh, could work. And, um, so with Andy's help, I'm going to explore, uh, communications and, uh, fact finding with interested parties. And if there are no objections, um, I'd like to, you know, bring it back and, and talk to the council about going, uh, through the process. If, if it looks like it's feasible, then we would go through a very public transparent process of an RFP, RFQ type process to see, uh, how much interest is out there. And, uh, I'm more of the mindset, and again, it's this early on, you may not like the idea. But I'd like to, uh, you know, push forward with it and, 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 um, I, and the mindset would keep it simple and, uh, turnkey, uh, much like a, uh, cell tower, if you will, and just take the lease and not get into the convoluted and very complex, um, process of energy credits and, um, you know, rates and so forth. But again, it's a risk reward and we can figure out, we'll, I'm sure, learn a lot through the process if, if the council thinks it's a good idea to do so. So, that was it with the landfill. We're moving along.
Any, uh, comments or questions? Is everyone okay with?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
Mike, when was the last time you gave us an update on the landfill?
Couldn't, I can't nail down a date.
Yeah, because I, I don't remember hearing about, like, when they started the capping process and all that stuff. And now this is, uh, capping process is complete and I don't re, recall the process starting, so.
Oh, no, I, I, I just don't, I know it's been, I'll go, have to go back through my notes. I just can't recall, uh, when the last time we
Yeah, I thought one of your notes in the spring talked about cap, I, I
I think it was about six months ago.
Six, it could be six months ago.
All right.
I will dig, I'll dig that out.
Must be my memory, failing me. All right, thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
Real quick, Mr. Chairman, um, two questions. You said, keep it simple about talk, not talk about energy credits, but that is something that we could look into as energy credits coming back to offset the town's energy costs. And the second question is, you brought up a cell tower. Is that something that can go there? We're talking about putting a cell tower up near the middle school.
Oh, I, yeah, I guess it could. I, I don't know. Oh, I, yeah, I guess it could. I, I don't know.
Is it close enough to where they want their?
I, I just don't, I, I don't know if the s-. My gut tells me the, the cell tower anchorings would be a problem.
Oh, okay.
I don't know. I'm just, I'm, I'm just.
That makes sense.
Whereas a, right, a ground mount, it, it, from what I understand, for a solar array, it isn't going to penetrate that, that deep, but a, something that has to sustain a hundred and fifty foot monopole. Would likely have to have a concrete base and deep, uh, deep anch- deep anchorings, so.
Good point.
I could still chase it down.
No, I, I don't think, I actually think you're right, so.
All right, any other comments or questions?
I just have a comment, Mr. Chairman, so. When I was the Rocky Hill Town Attorney, we did fifteen acres in a solar array with the ZREC program, zero emissions renewable energy credits. So I, I was actually on the commission that picked the developer. We actually own a solar city, which. Worked out okay, but, so if you want to talk about that, Mike, too, I have pretty, a lot of experience on it.
Right.
Thank you. All right, anyone else? All right, we're up to number five. Making our way through.
Number five, uh, the EMPG Emergency Management Planning Grant Pool Funding, um, so we're fortunate enough to, and I'm happy to report that Plainville's application. To the twenty twenty-three EMPG Pool Funding has been selected for funding. Uh, the grant award of twenty-five thousand will be used to renovate the Emergency Operations Center, EOC, at the Police Department, and, um, the. Period of performance for this award will be July first, twenty twenty-four, through September thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, so this pool funding became available. I, I like to, you know, acknowledge the. Fire Marshal, Andy, and, and Police Department for, for coming together to be able to take advantage of that and, and find that opportunity. Uh, I think it, you know, bodes well for us to be able to, you know, uh, avail ourselves of that. Funding and grant opportunities, so great, great progress there. I don't know if there are any questions?
All right, yeah, any, any questions, comments? All right, we'll move on to the next item.
Item six, Capital Region Natural Hazards Mitigation Plan Update. Um, essentially, uh, this is Plainville's hazardous mitigation climate. Adaptation Plant, uh, Plan that is contained in the annex as part of the capital regions, uh, which is the Capital Region Council of Government's, uh, CICOG Plan. Uh, I believe this is done on, on an annual basis, um, and, or, uh, uh, biannual basis. The Capital Region Council of Government has prepared. The plan in concert with the Connecticut Institute for Resilience and Climate Adaptation, C R, C I R C A, to identify unmet climate-related needs related, related, excuse me, to flooding and extreme heat through participation in the resilience. Resilient Connecticut Program. Uh, both planning strategies have been aligned together into one document, so, uh, CICOG is the, uh, um, the lead applicant. The overall plan is pending FEMA approval based on the adoption of local annexes for participating municipalities, and there's an item under new business to approve the resolution to adopt the Hazard Mitigation Plan Update, and, um, certainly if there. Specific, uh, questions, I might not be able to answer. Mark DeVoe would certainly be able to, to handle that. He was the, um, interface with the state and did the legwork on the annex planning and so forth that he's, he's included. There's additional, uh, memos in the packet for, for your review, uh, but. That is what I have.
All right, um, any questions or comments on this subject? All right, we'll move on to EV charging stations.
Item seven, yes, EV charging stations, so this was a, uh, project of Resource Lighting and Energy, RLE, uh, the contractor for the project, and they installed, uh, five dual-port electric vehicle charging stations, level two. Charging stations, uh, Charge Point is the, uh, the name of the charging station in five municipal, uh, locations around town, uh, here at the municipal center, the library, uh, Rec Department Building, Plainville High School, and Pateroski Park. Total project cost was two hundred and fifty-two thousand eight oh eight. Uh, this project qualified for two thou- two hundred thousand dollars in utility rebates, and the remaining fifty-two thousand eight oh eight was funded through RLE's installation, maintenance, and loyalty programs, so I'm happy to report that they are up in, I believe, all. And.
Not the rec yet.
Not rec, all four out of five. So, uh, little, a little extra work there at rec before that gets energized, but four out of five, so. That is a report on the update for the EV charging station.
All right, any, uh, comments or questions? For some major?
Um, Mr. Chairman, I have a quick question with, cause I know where I work, they, they have multiple EV charging stations, and, but they limit everybody that parks there to charge up to three hours per day, so if they're there for three hours, they get a phone call or an email saying. All right, your three, three hours is up, you need to move your vehicle, and then someone else can go and move their vehicle into that spot and, and charge, so is there any? Any plans on doing something like that? Has there, has there been problems with people staying there all day long and?
Well, uh, yeah, and I'll, I'll defer to Andy, uh, cause he really, um, did the legwork on this, but prior to doing this upgrade, we did have an issue. In fact, um, I had to speak, uh, to a customer, and we ended up. Posting outside that we had, I believe we posted for a two-hour, uh.
Four.
Oh, four-hour, four-hour limit. Uh, they were, they were there overnight and, and.
Wow.
I see them all the time, and so finally, it was a timing issue where they were actually at the car, and I said, listen, I said, you know, this is not a monopoly in, in terms of, so they, they understood, they got it, but, you know, it's just giving other people, and that, you know, we, in fairness, we hadn't at that point posted, and so we did, uh, but again, they quickly, that, that terminal and the, um, high school, uh, failed, uh, and we were, we were cannibalizing, and these are, you know, they've been around for a while, so we were trying to. Keep them going as, as, as much as we could, but yes, we did, we did address that, and we will, uh, address that in, in this round.
So it's a four-hour max for each one? Okay, good, thank you.
All right, any?
Great question.
Any other questions or comments? All right, what's next?
Item eight is pavement markings. Um, so. Technical Services Department requests the Town Council authorize, uh, to purchase services for line striping and pavement markings. Um, the, uh, fiscal year twenty twenty-five Capital Improvement Plan, CIP, allocated thirty thousand for these services, which was approved by the Town Council. The project will cover four railroad crossings at Neal Court and Broad Street, as well as thirty-four thousand fifty linear feet of double yellow epoxy lines. Pavement markings services are available through the Capital Region Purchasing Council, uh, under bid number seven fifty-five, with Safety Markings LLC as the preferred vendor, so there's an item under new business to award bid twenty twenty-five oh six Pavement Markings to Safety Markings LLC of Bridgeport, Connecticut, under the CRPC bid seven fifty-five in the amount of twenty-nine thousand four oh one. So this helps, you know, get, uh, it's, it's, it's a regular ongoing, uh, process we have this year. We're trying to, um, get more life out of the markings with, uh, the epoxy versus the, um. Yes, it's called water.
Water-based.
Water-based, uh, that doesn't, doesn't last as long, so, um, you know, that's why spending twenty-four, uh, twenty-nine thousand four oh one, hoping to get, you know, more life, and, um, a very reputable, uh, firm out of Bridgeport that, um, does a lot of this throughout the state. They're very good at it, so.
Okay, any, uh, comments or questions? On the line or pavement markings? All right, Whiting Street.
Whiting Street, uh, reconstruction project update. Um, I just wanted to, you know, bring you up to speed, and of course, you've probably been out there, and, and, and we mentioned today, uh, talked about detours around Whiting Street, but. The Department of Technical Services and the roadway division requested the Town Council consider and approve to waive the bid procedure to procure milling and paving services from Tilcon of Plainville to resurface Whiting Street from North Street to East Street. This would work, uh, this work would complete the resurfacing of Whiting Street from Broad Street to East Street. Um, this was a gap. Uh, this was, uh, something that wasn't, um, originally in the, the project's scope, uh, but talking with, um, you know, coun- council members, uh, other individuals, and internally, um, you know, we didn't. Want to sort of leave a project incomplete, or have the public looking and scratching their heads as to, gee, you were so close in Broad Street, but you couldn't fix the rumples over on the other side, so I think it made, it made great sense to try and incorporate, uh, the entire intersection at Broad, to smooth those problems out, and extend it all the way, uh, down to Route ten, so. They came up with, uh, they being Technical Services, John Bossy and, and staff came up with, um, negotiating and looking at the, uh, the contract with, with the state bid price, uh, for that, and, uh, it's estimated that the paving section of the roadway from North Street to East Street will cost approximately forty-five thousand. Uh, the total cost of milling is estimated to be approximately, uh, twelve thousand, so total cost of Tilcon service materials would be approximately fifty-seven thousand dollars. Uh, I believe there's a memo from John as, as well outlining the rationale for asking the council to waive this so we could take advantage of those, uh, prices from Tilcon and get this incorporated into, into the project for sixty-seven thousand, and so there's an item there as well for new business.
All right, any comments or questions? Are there thing, and it's looking like a fall completion, October?
It is on, still on track. Things are running smoothly.
Okay.
And yes, by, by the end of fall.
Okay. Any, uh, other comments or questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
It's not Whiting Street, but it's pave, paving related. Is South Washington Street where it's been dug up and patched, is that gonna be repaved, or is it staying that way?
It'll, it'll, I think it'll be repaved, um, but, uh, you know.
Awful.
The issue is, yeah, it is.
It's so bad.
It's, and right before the balloon fest, too.
Right.
I mean, what, what the hell? I mean.
You're, you're, you're right, and, and, and on top, uh, it's just the, the aggravation of nighttime, um, uh, activities in terms of, you know, the, the noise for the residents in that area, it's, it, it's. It's a pain, and, um, I'm, I've been talking with John Bossy about that and trying to get a better understanding of how much of, yeah, I think we're gonna get a, a lane. We're not gonna get a, of, I'm not sure, we're gonna get a full street reconstruction. I'm not reconstructed, but a, but a full street mill and pave, so I'm, I'm still, uh, gathering information on that. It's the same question I had, uh, after fielding many questions from, from, from residents about that, and how long it's taking to get that done. It's a problem. Uh, unfortunately, yeah, great question, but not, not one I, I have an answer, full answer.
Is there, when a project like that is done, it's, it's, after it's repaved, does somebody go out and inspect, or is it? And say, yes, and signs off on it?
Yeah, right.
Cause it's bad, like?
You don't want, yeah.
Yeah.
I had to change the way I come home from work.
Certain standards, and the state, state is gonna oversee that as well. But, um, there's another item I'll add. Oh, I, I made a note for, uh, discussion of interest that I'll talk about, which has to do with, um, Route one seventy-seven, um, Farmington to Plainville. That is underway as well.
All right, any other comments or questions? All right, uh, up to number ten.
Number ten, the, the social media analytics. Uh, I haven't done this in a while, um, and, uh, wanted to give you an update. Um, I had thought about doing, uh, putting it on the screen, oh, Andy, I just have it on the screen there. That's fantastic. Um, but I, I, I'll just go through the paper with you, and, uh, um, well, Andy, yeah, you can, why not? It's, it's up, it's up there.
You mean I get to click?
Yeah. I mean, I, I will say, just, just, it's, it's a great, it's a great team, and, uh, if you hadn't noticed, we are having a little fun with it, um, so, um, you know, I'll, I'll, it's only ten slides, I'll take you through, and I know I don't want to be long and, and have a long night, but it's working for us. It's working, and, and the reason, you know, a lot of reasons why, but in terms of, you know, branding and marketing, so we're taking advantage of, of free social media, uh, uh, you know, opportunities, so we're not spending any money on marketing or advertising. This is just organic reach that we're, we're doing, and, um, it's, again, to engage members of the community, spread information, create awareness, uh, create economic growth, economic opportunities, and, uh, uh, essentially to, to brand and market the town of Plainville, and obviously, we, we've, uh, embarked on the Discover Plainville Committee to look at, you know, a survey that's been completed, we'll go through, and try to get to a, um, you know, tagline and, and logo kind of thing, uh, further on in the process, but, um, we, um, are educating ourselves on, on, on the platforms, and, you know, the, uh, the reach and the engagement, uh, comes from, um, you know, Plainville popping up on people's feeds because they're sharing, they're liking, and they're reposting, and we're understanding, uh, from this slide, what the platforms, how they work, right, and so, understanding, uh, the platforms is, is essential, and so what we. We have across platforms, uh, YouTube is, is down the road. We haven't done anything there yet, but we're looking at opportunities potentially, so we're evaluating it. That's why that's there, but our main is, is Facebook, Instagram, LinkedIn, and understanding which particular posts are going to play better on, on which platform, and a lot of it, as you'll see later in the slide, is, is cross-platforms, right? That, that just video does well in a lot of different places, right, but just depends really on, on the content, the structure, but a lot of different things, so, um, but, um, yeah, it's, it's just understanding the platforms, how they, uh, you know, as you can imagine, the, the LinkedIn, uh, is really more toward, you know, some of the, maybe the policy stuff, or the project, or maybe even for us, what we're seeing is the, uh, personnel side of, of HR and recruitment, and, uh, trying to find candidates, so that's where we've spent some, uh, time doing and crafting in that area, um, but our, our target audience, um, the people who live in Plainville, obviously, uh, people who associate with Plainville closely, that could be, you know, their job is here, business is here, uh, friends are, are here, people considering, uh, moving to Plainville, people considering moving their business to Plainville, so that's, uh, you know, we're trying to, we're trying to reach that this is, uh, you know, small-town America. It's Americana, you know, it's, it's just, it, it, for a lot of different people, and the surveys are, are interesting to read, uh, there, just this connection with the people of Plainville, and that this, uh, it's, you're not, you're not getting lost in a big city kind of, kind of thing, so, um, great, great, uh, to understand. Who are we, who are we looking to, to, uh, engage with, and we're getting, we're getting that engagement back, which is, which is great. A lot of, a lot of feedback comes back through, through the comments that we're able to, to go through and, and, and read, and, you know, gather some valuable information from that. Um. Our next slide on, on examples of our, our content. We, we do local business spotlights, uh, as part of our way to engage, uh, the, the business community, and so each Thursday, we focus on a local Plainville business. We've done seventeen since, uh, February. Uh, Thursday will mark, uh, will be the eighteenth, it was the one in the pipeline, so, you know, we're doing, um, we're doing outreach and, and, you know, putting the spotlight on local business, and that, that, you know, that, that's just. Smart business, I think, you know, and, and what we get and what we learn, uh, when we go to these businesses, we get the inside look there, you know, in terms of getting additional information we probably wouldn't get otherwise, right, so it's a, it's a ambassador-type program, where we're out there, integrate, you know, and, and, and finding out, um, you know, that we can collaborate with them, that they have a following, and we collaborate with them, and, and so it, it's great. It just kind of pulls information, cause they'll say, you know, this is great, this is not so great, this is what we, works for us, and why we like Plainville, and this is what we're, we're struggling with, and, and there's a whole host of issues around, uh, business and, and, um, what they do within our community, so I think it's been very rewarding and very important for us to engage and give businesses the opportunity. I just wish, you know, we can only do so much, so, but I think getting, getting to eighteen is pretty successful. Um, I'm doing the, uh, Monday Managers Minute, where I, you know, talk about, uh, timely, uh, events. Uh, today was the, was promoting the Balloon Festival, and, um, talk about, you know, the fun and exciting things happening in Plainville, so, um, that's just another platform, um, that we do, across platforms. That's another. That's another aspect that we do across, across platforms. And we do trends. We do, you know, promoting Plainville by doing trends that they'll show you in the, in the next slides. You know, we're, we're doing the analytics, we're doing the views and taking a look at where the, these are. So, number one was the, down on the bottom middle here is the butt, you know, I've driven through Plainville a hundred times but never got out of the car. And twenty-two thousand views later, that, that's the best performing Facebook reel.
It is catchy.
Right? So, yeah, it gets better. Because I'll tell you, you know, they talk a lot about the algorithm and, and trying to figure that out is, is, you know, is, is really the holy grail of, of what people are, it's really an interest graph. So, it's what people are interested in and what piques their attention. So, after that is the, the landfill. So, I did a post on that in terms of that capping, and that was thirteen thousand. And, and then over in the far-right corner, and I think this has to do a lot with John Bossy appearing in this Whiting Street episode, but Whiting Street is getting paved this summer in the upper-right corner, eleven thousand views on that and a lot of comments on that, positive, mostly positive in terms of, you know, finally, you know, getting to that point where we can get it done. So, you know, down to just a few thousand or, you know, thirteen hundred views, but it's interesting how that plays out. And that's Facebook, on Facebook reels. And now Instagram is the next one. And the top performer there was the Mike and Andy in the, in the bottom there. And what we're doing is when people say they've never heard of Plainville, we're just blinking, okay? I'm going to tell you something. When Amanda said we should do that, I thought, you're, that, why? It's just, it's, but it falls into that category of, of trends and trends that are happening. And Andy just, Andy and I just looked at each other and thought, okay. So, it literally took us the amount of time it takes to walk down the stairs, turn, okay, guys, blink, we blink, she captures it, we're upstairs, all of three, three minutes, not even that, three minutes. You know, walk down the stairs, back up. She ends up posting that it's the, it's the top performer on Instagram at fifteen thousand. And I, you know, it just because it's a trend and it was timely and she, she pushed us to do, do this, and we said, yeah, but it gets Plainville, it's like, what do you mean, you never heard of Plainville? You know? And, and that shows up and pops up on, on, on reels. So, again, and some of the things we, we spend a little bit longer doing, get, you know, a handful or a hundred or a thousand views. And this took two, literally two minutes to do, and it was, you know, fifteen thousand. So, it's interesting. Can't really figure it out, it's the, it's the algorithm, but yeah, so. Next slide. In terms of drilling down, the last ninety days, Facebook follows up three hundred fifty-five, Instagram, two-twenty-one, and LinkedIn is actually the number, two-twenty-one is the total, but LinkedIn in the fine print on the right, forty-two. So, I want to go back, let's go back a slide because one of the interesting things, I can't, I still can't figure this out, Andy, will understand this, the, the Instagram reel, third in from the left on the EV charging stations. We played it across platforms. And so, I think, what is that, one, eleven hundred there? And on Facebook, it was two, two thousand on Facebook and eleven hundred on, on Instagram. That same video, same thing across platforms, I had actually posted on my personal LinkedIn, and then we took it from there and, and put it on the town's LinkedIn. And on my personal, it went, it went bananas. It went to six thousand and is still climbing, and it's like.
Why?
I don't know. The, other than, we tagged the ChargePoint Company in, in the post. And they have a major, well, they have a very healthy following of a hundred thousand followers, a hundred sixteen thousand followers, but did not play the same way when it was on Instagram or Facebook. So, yeah, it's one of those things that we, we're learning as much as we can and just trying to, you know, do new things. But we also, you know, beyond the analytics, trying to dive into those, those, those comments because those help us as well. It's just as valuable, to me, just as valuable to get the comments that people are posting as it is knowing, you know, how much reach we're getting, right? So, interesting to note that the gender race, women are winning on the Facebook followers and Instagram followers by seventy, nearly seventy, seventy percent on Facebook to thirty percent and sixty to forty on Instagram. So, I'll leave it at that. That's as far as we'll get into the, the breakdown of the analytics. But it is working for us and we've had conversations on the Board of Ed's side as well, you know, kicking around ideas like, you know, a podcast. And then I think because we are exploring opportunities on, on YouTube as well, the podcast would help feed the YouTube content. So, yeah, happy to answer any, any questions, but I think we're getting pretty good engagement and we're getting good responses from the community and, and businesses, and we'll continue to do that as much as we can and.
All right. Well, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Certainly, it's interesting navigating how to reach people nowadays. It's a, it's a lot different than it was when I was younger.
Yeah.
You know, but.
Well, you know, it, we're doing, it's not just the, you know, the business, we're doing a lot of public service announcement. And you made me think about, you know, how to reach people, right? So, we talk about, you know, say, early voting and, you know, any type of public service announcement that we, we need to do. Social media is the way we need to understand how they play on the platforms and how to craft that message to, to, to reach. It's not so much as, you know, a flyer or a mailer that, that goes out. So, it's just another tool and we're figuring out how to use it effectively.
All right. Well, any questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Just two things. Everyone loves the Managers Minute.
Yeah, exactly.
It's the most common que, most common comment I get to me is you should make, you should make it a Managers Two Minutes. And the other one, where was the, where was the video of you jumping in the pool? That didn't get, that wasn't top?
It wa, um, it, I don't know. It just didn't make the cut.
Didn't make the cut? All right.
It was, it was a top performer. But I, I think, yeah, I don't know, I've talked to Amanda, but it probably because it had so much play already that you already knew that it was, that it was a top.
I figured that would have been the top, way up there.
You're right. I have to go back and actually look at the number, but it was, it was a top performer.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Just wanted to reiterate what Councilman Gettleman said, getting great feedback on all the social media, particularly the Managers Minute, really from various age groups and disparate groups of people. It's really striking a note and a very positive response.
Good. Thank you.
I agree.
Yeah, I got, I got credit to the team. I mean, the learning curve for me, and I'm, well, you, you know, the, you know, the group. So, yeah, it's, they're, they're pushing me to do, you know, expanding my skill set.
Get out of your comfort zone a little bit, maybe.
You can see the progression of your, of your, now you're more comfortable. The very first one, you were.
A little formal.
Very nervous.
Yeah. Oh, you're not kidding. Yeah.
Michael, how did you place with the Pettit Foundation race?
That was up, that was up there. That was, that was a good one. There was a lot of great comment. People identify with the office or picked up on that. That's what we did. We did a takeoff on the office and, and people that identify with that really laughed hard and really enjoyed that one. So, and I think it helped promote ahead of the, and that's, that's the whole, that's the whole purpose, is to, to link up, David, I'm glad you brought that up, to, to link up with events in a timely way to advance, you know, knowledge and/or get, you know, boost the participation and/or just, okay, I didn't know they had a race. I didn't know anything about the Pettit Foundation, you know? And as long as they, you know, it spurs interest, then we've done our job.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else with a comment or question? All right. It's time for happenings.
Well, if I could.
Unless you have one more thing to add.
I do, actually.
Or two more things.
I, I just wanted to.
Tonight's the night.
Yeah.
No, don't, don't look at that. Just, yeah, keep going.
So, before we get to happenings, as you'll note, there is item four under New Business, which is the Classification Compensation Study. And I just wanted to talk about that or maybe hand off to Andy to talk about that before he goes into happenings about the, the work we've been doing around that.
Okay.
Sure. A memo was shared with you at the beginning of the meeting. This is a compensation and classification study for the town. We talked about it through the budget process and we budgeted for it for this fiscal year. But essentially, we wrapped up our request for proposals process. We received seven proposals, all of them good. We vetted them, interviewed them. We are recommending to move forward with Evergreen Solutions. Their proposed budget came to twenty-nine thousand five hundred. And essentially, they're going to be looking at maximum eighty-five positions across multiple classifications, and that's representative of employees in Town Hall, Police Dispatch, the Library and Public Works. You will notice that the motion, recommended motion is for a not to exceed thirty-five thousand. That's in case we wanted to negotiate some additional site visits and if we had to accommodate costs for travel for the consultants. But this particular firm we're recommending has successfully worked on similar projects across the country and here in Connecticut in Weathersfield. So, we feel, we feel confident that they can, they can do the work for us. And we're on a timeline for this to be completed by December of January of this year.
All right. Anyone with any questions? I believe that's what, item number four under New Business?
Correct.
Okay.
Thanks, Andy.
All right.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
All right. Happening.
All right.
Great.
Let's go.
So, Fall Pickup, Bulk Pickup is scheduled to start on Monday, September ninth, and it'll end on Monday, October twenty-eighth. Plainville has an on-demand pickup for bulk collection. Residents who currently have curbside waste and recycling collection are eligible to receive one bulk pickup per calendar year free of charge for the acceptable large items that don't typically fit in your normal waste collection. If you're curious as to what those items are, you could visit the Town of Plainville's website at www.planevillect.com for a complete list of acceptable bulk items and instructions on how to request a pickup. We'll also be putting some stuff out on social media as well. From the Plainville Public Library and for information on library programs, including registration, you can call the Plainville Public Library at eight-six-zero-seven-nine-three-one-four-four-six or visit www.planevillect.com livery. The first is the Friends of the Plainville Public Library Annual Book Sale. This is on Friday, September sixth, from twelve to six P.M. And on Saturday, September seventh, from nine A.M. to three P.M. It's at the Chase Auditorium at the library. And essentially, you fill a bag for ten dollars all day. And if you have any books or DVDs or CDs that you'd like to donate, you can do that during library's business hours. On Friday, August twenty-third, at one-thirty P.M., the library will show the documentary, They'll Love Me When I'm Dead. It's in the final fifteen years of the life of a legendary director, Orson Welles. He pins his Hollywood comeback hopes on one film. Harmonica Concert with Bob Hennessy on Tuesday, August twenty-seventh, at six-thirty P.M. All ages are welcome to enjoy a delightful mix of pop, blues, rock, country and jazz standards. A representative from the American Job Center will be at the library on Tuesday, August twenty-seventh, from two to five P.M. to help register individuals for CT hires and assist with resumes and offer one-on-one career coaching. No appointment is necessary. And finally, from the Senior Center and for all information on Senior Center programs, you can call the Plainville Senior Center at eight-six-zero-seven-four-seven-five-seven-two-eight. And all programs are free and open to the public unless otherwise indicated. Veteran's Social Hour on Tuesday, oh, I have June twenty-fifth, that is the incorrect date, probably August, but I will get a corrected date for you. But it's at ten A.M. These monthly information and support meetings are conducted by Sherri Voe, the Veterans Liaison for Hartford Healthcare Senior Services, and for all veterans over the age of sixty and their spouses are welcome to attend. And you can call the Senior Center to register. Library Book Day on Wednesday, September fourth, from twelve-thirty to one-thirty P.M. The Plainville Public Library will bring a variety of large and regular print books for community members to check out at the Senior Center. For all ages, Health Benefits of Tea, Monday on September ninth at ten A.M. This is an informational event on how to drink various types of tea and how those types of tea can promote different health benefits. Technology Tuesday, on Tuesday, September tenth, from ten A.M. to twelve P.M., uh, ten A.M. to twelve P.M. Carrie Burgess from the Plainville Public Library will assist participants. With any issues with electronic devices, registration is required. And finally, the Luau Party on Tuesday, September tenth at noon. The cost is seven dollars per person, and you can celebrate the end of summer with a Hawaiian luau. Attendees may come in Hawaiian shirts and enjoy a tropical cookout at the Senior Center. And that's all I have.
So, is there any additional questions or comments for the town manager or assistant town manager? Thank you for your reports and all the updates. We, we are trying to take care of a lot of stuff. Before I open it up for public comment, just one note, I meant to mention this at the beginning of the meeting. Under Other Discussions of Interest later in the agenda, I have asked that we talk a little bit about Eversource and this public benefit charge that has caused so much havoc with everyone. So, we will be talking about that as well under Other Discussions of Interest. It was just, some information came out over the weekend that, why it's not on the agenda, so we, if you can just add that as well. So, with that, we will open up public comments.
Mr. Chairman, sorry, just a quick correction. I didn't have the correct date, but it's Tuesday, August twenty-seventh for Veteran's Social Hour.
Thank you very much. That was quick. All right. So, at this point in the meeting, anyone that wishes to address the council may do so. Please step to the podium, give your name and address. You'll have three minutes to make your comments. Is there anyone who wishes to address the council this evening? Mr. Kislik?
John Kislik, six-five Forest Soul Avenue. Good evening, Town Council.
Good evening.
My comments have to do with the town manager's residency requirement as to the charter. You know, I think our, our council manager form of government started in about fifty-eight or something like that. And every town manager that's been hired by this town since then, up until now, has moved to Plainville. Now, I have nothing against the town manager. I, I even supported when he wanted this, what do you call it, project manager in the high school and congratulate him that he did a great job with his, with his team on solving that financial part for this last sewer project. And, and I've agreed with a lot of things. It's, it's nothing personal, even though, you know, I know the town manager doesn't like my style. And when, when I see somebody who's completely off the wall and out of line and making illegal motions, I'm going to express my feelings the way I do. And I know a lot of people don't like it, but they'll have to just live with it. And I don't care if I'm banned from any committee, it's actually doing me a favor. But my big complaint is, is with this council. You know, you've been taken O to, to obey the charter. You know, we had a vote on this charter issue, and more than a thousand people wanted to leave it in that the town manager has to live in Plainville. So, we have that. We have the charter saying this, and it's been like that since nineteen fifty-eight. And, and the town manager signed a contract, an agreement to move here. And this council promised us that we would have an answer. And you're going to go on evaluation tonight. And I don't, you know, I don't see how you can have any evaluation when it's been two years now and the town manager hasn't moved here. You have to do something. You're, you're not performing your elected duties and responsibilities to the citizens and charter as far as I'm concerned. And I'm really, really disappointed in this council. A lot of, I like a lot of you, and I've known you for years, but you have to bite the bullet. A lot of, I like a lot of you, and I've known you for years, but you have to bite the bullet. You have to grow some spine and make a tough decision. It's only right and fair for the town of people, the town of Plainville. Because right now, the way I see it, and you're not going to like this one, you're operating above the law. And do you want to be known as the only town in the state of Plainville that's going to be your brand, above the law? It's not right. Let's get something straightened out. The town manager has to live in Plainville. There's no way around it, absolutely none. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else wish to address the council? And I did forget to mention, the first beep is, you have thirty seconds left. The second beep means you've run out of time. Anyone else wish to address the council? Yes?
I'm not as tall as him. Marilyn Charette, eighteen Milford Street, Plainville. And I've lived in this town all my life, and I've known all of you, most of you, for a very long time. I love this town. It's, my roots are here. You know, my dad had a business here, my brother had a business here. We've given a lot to the community. If you don't mind, I'm asking the chair if I can direct a question to the town manager, please.
You can ask it, yes. I can't guarantee you'll get an answer, but.
Okay. Mr. Paulhaus, in all due respect, I would like to know if you've ever had a plan to move to Plainville.
And can I just say something before? I don't think that's an appropriate question tonight.
Why not?
Because we've been advised by our town attorney not to discuss it. And I just want to, we are working on something, and we're hoping in September to have a resolution.
You were originally going to have an answer for tonight, I believe. That's the impression that we were given.
Yeah, I'm not sure I ever put a date on it, but if I did, we are looking.
Okay, I guess. First of all, I don't understand.
You're frustrated.
I don't understand why you, we've had to harness your voice for the last eight months, seven months, however long you've been up here, okay? I don't see why all this has to be in secrecy. Why not? Why can't you have some interchange with the town? Why is it that we're being silenced?
Well, I think, I think people who've wanted to make comments have been able to make comments. I don't think we've tried to silence anyone.
Well, no, but we're not communicating, we're not going back and forth, and having a real discussion about this. And that's my issue.
Okay.
Why is it, okay, I would like to know, why did the town attorney advise you not to discuss this with us?
Do you want to answer that?
What is so?
And so, I, oh, I hope this still works.
Yes, it's working.
The reason that I had given the advice not to discuss this during our sessions now are because that typically, there's always two sides to most issues. And so, the manager's here, and he would have one side, and then the council's here and has another side, and I'm the lawyer for the town. And lots of times, when you have those types of relationships, where you've got two sides to something, if you discuss the relative positions, you're going to talk about the strengths and weaknesses of each side, to be fair. And as a lawyer, I don't talk about the strengths and weaknesses of my client's position until the thing is done. We don't, because then we're revealing, you know, what our position is, what the strategy is. So, that's the reason why, if I were to explain to you what the issues are, I think you might understand that it's not as clear-cut as you think. But, once again, that would not be helpful in us reaching an agreement, so.
So, which one is?
That's the point.
Which one is your client, the town council or the town manager?
The town is my client.
Town of Plainville sits client.
The town of Plainville is my client.
Well, as a council, and nothing personal, but you've really lost my confidence in you. And I'm really very, very disappointed in you.
Well, and I understand your frustration, and all I would ask is, you give us some more time.
Can I ask you this? Why have you dragged it on for eight months? I believe that's.
I don't, I don't really have an answer why, you know, I don't feel it's dragged on. Again, I think this is more complicated than just the way that some people.
The town charter isn't complicated.
The town charter is very complicated. Anytime you have a document that gets interpreted, it's complicated, trust me. And I understand your position, and you think this is a very black-and-white situation. And from my perspective, it's not. And we can agree to disagree, but we are working on it. And, you know, there will be a resolution, and I'm asking for another month.
I want to know when.
Our next, September 16th, I believe, is our next regular meeting. That's my hope.
Is that when you're, we're going to get an answer?
I hope so, yes. And I can tell you, yes, definitely, but I'm one of seven. It's not strictly my decision. You know, there is a group of us that are equally representate, represent everyone equally up here, and.
Yeah, I do understand, but you are the chair.
I am, no, and I do, I do have the ability to, you know, and I don't have, you know, anyone up here is, any council member can ask for anything to be on agenda, I can't stop it.
Well, I'm disappointed that you're not allowing me to ask the town manager that.
And I understand, and I probably would be frustrated if I was in your position. I do understand that. I hope you believe that, you know, we're not doing this to frustrate the residents of Plainville.
Well, again, I'm very, very disappointed in you, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, and, you know, I appreciate you being honest. You know, at least I'll talk for myself, and, you know, I hope that I can live up to your expectations moving forward. I hope this works out the way you're, will make you a little bit more comfortable. I truly, you know, I mean that, all right? Anyone else wish to address the council tonight? All right, seeing no one, we will close public comments. We have no items under old business. We can move now to item 11, new business. If I could find the right page, is there a motion?
Mr. Chair.
Councilwoman Christopher.
Motion to authorize the additional appropriation of coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds associated with the American Rescue Plan Act for the removal of underground storage tanks at the Roadways Department.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries, item number two.
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Underwood.
Motion to adopt a resolution entitled, "A Resolution Adopting the Capital Region Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan," of date.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions regarding this item? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries, item number three.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Getteman.
Motion to adopt a resolution regarding the White Oak redevelopment project.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries, item number four.
Mr. Chair.
Councilwoman Maranti.
A motion to award RFP number 2025-04, Classification and Total Compensation Study, to Evergreen Solutions LLC, Tallahassee, Florida, for an amount not to exceed $35,000.
Second.
Motion and a second, any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries, item number five.
Mr. Chair.
Councilwoman Maranti.
Motion to award bid number 2025-06, pavement markings under capital region purchasing council bid number 755 to Safety Marking LLC, Bridgeport, Connecticut, in the amount of $29,401.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries, item number six.
Chairman.
Councilman Hurley.
Motion to award bid 2025-07, Roadways Fueling System under Capital Regional Purchasing Council's EZLOQ program, in the amount of $491,452.92.
Second.
Motion and a second, any additional comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries, item number seven.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Tompkins.
Motion to waive the bid process and award bid number 2025-08E, Whiting Street from North Street to East Street, reconstruction paving services to Tilcon, Connecticut, New Brit, in Connecticut, for an amount not to exceed $67,000.
Second.
Motion and a second, any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries, and tax refunds.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Hurley.
Motion to approve the tax refunds listed on the addendum.
Second.
Motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? That motion carries. That concludes new business, so other discussions of interest, we do have a couple items this evening, middle school first.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, a brief update on the middle school project. The committee met to evaluate and review eight firm, architectural firms, is where we are, we're in the process of going through a selection for architects. There were eight firms that submitted proposals, and the committee has whittled it down to four, and they are going to meet next week, I believe, in terms of a small committee to go through that. The response was good, as I said, with eight, and the proposals ranged from 2.3 million to 3.7 million. So, there was a pretty good spread, but the, there was a concentration there in the low bid size, so we're going to take a look at four, and they're going to move that process along, and I just wanted to let you know.
All right. Any comments or questions about the middle school? I know it's been a while since we talked about it.
When's it going to be done?
Yeah.
Well, we got to get started first.
Yes.
And to just, another note, architectural selection process first, and then likely transitioning into a construction manager at-risk selection, after having, you know, bringing the architect on board.
Any, any idea when an architect would be picked and sent to us for approval?
Well, yeah, we're hoping for, well, if we go through in the September meeting, try to get it ready for the September meeting.
Okay, all right.
Yeah.
All right, all right. Anyone with any other questions or comments? All right, Eversource, as I'm sure everyone's aware, we have a public benefit charge on Eversource bills that has caused quite the, I don't know what the right word is, but I'm not happy, I'll put it that way. I'm sure most of you are not happy. In conversations with some other towns, and specifically with Cromwell, Cromwell actually, their council last week came out with a letter that they're sending to the governor's office, requesting a special session to discuss the issue, and see if there's anything legislatively that can be done, to kind of help the public. And I know it's a very complicated issue, but I just wanted to bring it up tonight. We do have a copy of the letter that Cromwell either sent, I think at this point, they probably have sent it on. But from our perspective, if the council would be interested in writing a letter, signing a letter, and sending it off to the governor, encouraging him to call for a special session to talk about the issue, and see if there's anything the state can do to get, get some relief. So, that's, that's kind of why I put it on the agenda. Anyone comments?
I think it's a good idea, but I'd like to see the town council of Plainville have a vote, even though there's no weight behind it, saying that we object, and are outraged over the, the extra money that's added to our bill every month.
I would agree.
I agree with the comments that Dave made, yeah.
I would agree, as long as there's a breakdown of what that, what that bill, what that portion of the bill is. Because it's not all public benefit. There's a large portion of it that's a bailout of the Millstone plant.
Yeah, I understand there's like several parts to that public benefit, but yes, that, and I understand that's the largest of the parts, but.
And I truly believe that the people of the state believed that the state of Connecticut was going to take care of it, not the people of Connecticut, the state, with some of their, some of their.
And I don't know if, you know, Mr. Town Manager, if you've heard anything, you know, through your groups, you know, as far as any other, you know, mayors or town managers in the area that have talked about this, or taking any action.
Well, right, I know, I'm monitoring those organizations, but there are emails going through, and I think you'll probably likely see discussions like you're having here this evening, and other, other communities throughout Connecticut, that I believe there'll be mounting pressure and coordinated effort to ask for some type of relief, in whatever shape and form that takes. But, yeah, it's buzzing out there. I don't think you can, you know, really, you know.
Because certainly, you know, I think, at the very minimum, getting a special session, at least to get them discussing it, I mean, that's clearly, I think, needs to happen. And I don't know if you want to reach out to Cromwell and ask if it's okay if we kind of, you know, whether we use their letter, or modify their letter to some degree, or if we create our own letter. But, you know, certainly, I'd be willing to, you know, if there's a consensus that you produced the letter, let us just take a quick look at it and send it off to the governor's office. I think that's appropriate.
Yes.
Yeah, no, we definitely, you know, we want to see something before anything is sent, you know?
Yeah, sure.
All right.
And do that.
Any other comments, questions?
Just said I'm in support of everything that you're talking about so far.
All right, well, thank you. All right, then, hearing no other comments, we do have a matter appropriate for executive session. We will be discussing the town manager evaluation. I don't anticipate a vote coming out of executive session. So, at this point.
Mr. Chairman.
Maybe give like a five or a 10-minute, before we convene.
I thought we were going to have a vote on the council's opinion on that.
Oh, well, you want, you want to add a vote saying that we're?
Absolutely.
Well, why don't you make a motion to add it?
Well, Councilman Gilman, what was it called, the public what?
Public benefit.
Public benefit?
Yeah.
Yeah, just make a motion to add a, you know, we're adding a motion regarding the public benefit.
It's a non-binding vote, but.
Yeah, but, you know, you could just say.
A vote that the town council objects to the Eversource Electric Company forcing the people to pay a public benefit. I think that the people of Plainville are against it, I know the town council is against
Right, so, we'll just, we're going to go slower, but we're, so that's just, that's a motion to add it to the agenda, that we take a non-binding vote, that we are, I hate to say not happy, that's clearly the wrong way to say it. I'm trying to help Cindy out. We're opposed to the public benefit charge on Eversource bills.
Absolutely.
Does that make sense?
Yes.
So, that's just a motion to add it to the agenda. We have a second, all those in favor of adding it to the agenda?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Hurley.
All right, so now, the motion to, the council objects to the public benefit charge on the Eversource bills.
Oh, sure. Mr. Chairman, motion to create a letter to the governor in opposition of the public benefit fee on the Eversource bills.
All right.
Second that motion.
Yeah.
Asking for a special session.
And asking for a special second.
Yeah, I think that's a very important point, that we're addressing, to please have a special session to address this, yeah.
And town clerk, you're keeping up with this? We'll just keep throwing stuff out there.
We just keep adding to it, so.
Clearly, we didn't, yeah, we didn't talk about this beforehand too much, as you can tell.
Dave.
Dave, yeah.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
And I would like add it to that motion. Sorry. I'd like to make it very clear that. The, I I I'd like to make it very clear that that the Millstone bailout is what I object to the most. I I, you know, I don't, people, people need to understand that about a huge portion of that public benefit is be from the Millstone bailout in 2016 or 2017, that that was kicked down the road.
To keep Millstone open.
Yeah.
All right, so I think we have a motion. And town clerk is okay? Do we have just a second, just so?
Second.
I second it.
Okay, that's fine. I just know we kept adding stuff there at the end. I want to make sure we're covering all our bases. Do you have a comment? Anyone have a comment?
Can you?
Any additional? Go ahead.
We just request, please read the motion. Yeah, we'll give Cindy a few minutes there, yeah. Mm-hmm. Take your time, Cindy, please.
And I think Rosemary's idea, sending this to the legislature or the governor is a great idea.
Yeah.
They want to, to read the motion.
Someone wants to hear, like,
Yeah, but take.
So just summarize, the motion is to to send a letter to the governor's office opposing the public benefit charge.
And requesting a special session.
Requesting a special session.
And with special, with uh, intense
With a?
Interest in the, the Millstone.
Millstone.
Issue.
I, I, yeah, bailout. I don't know if that's the right word, but.
That's exactly what it was.
That might be. Does that, Rosemary, does that summarize enough for you, or do you want to hear it read out?
I think it's, I think it's good to read the motion before we, before we vote. Because I think we're really moving to draft a letter.
Yes.
Yeah.
I mean, and ideally, you know, Cromwell's done 95% of the work if they're willing to let us kind of use their template.
Dog licenses?
We're getting there. I heard Millstone, so it's already coming to the end.
Make sure he writes it up good, because he's the one that's going to write it.
Yeah. Yes, why don't you just, yes, read it and.
Resolve to forward a letter to the governor's office in opposition to the public benefit charge.
Or the increase is actually is what we're objecting to.
Yeah.
To the ever source bills, comma, in particular, to bail out the Millstone plant payments, comma, and request a special session regarding same.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm, that's fine. No, I think you touched on everything.
I did.
Yeah.
So resolve to forward a letter to the governor's office in opposition to the public benefit, or the additional public benefit?
The increase.
Yeah.
It's the increase, yeah. The, the public benefit and it's, as an entity, it's existed for a long time.
In particular, the bailout Millstone plant payments, comma, and request a special session regarding same.
All right, I think we're all comfortable?
Yes.
Is that?
Yes.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, thank you very much for getting us through that. Now, before we go, I I'm sorry to do this. There's one other thing. Just early voting, and we do have September to talk about this, but just to put it on everyone's radar, you know, a discussion about, I don't know, you know, if the registrars, if there's a plan, how they're going to communicate early voting. I know we've gone through a primary process with it. Um, but at some point, I don't know, you know, maybe a manager's minute or some, you know, at some point, we probably just need to explain how it's going to work and, you know, seeing there's multiple days involved and, you know, some weekends even and.
Yes, we'll, we'll work internally to develop a plan, communicate with registrar's office, Cindy's office, and um, you know, get additional um, like a manager's minute and other social media posts and information out there, um, well ahead of that, um, those timelines. So, yeah, it's something we'll be working on internally.
All right.
Mr. Chair, just want to say, I think social media is going to be a wonderful resource.
Sure.
For giving people the information they need.
Yeah, I agree.
I'm looking forward to getting Cindy on social media.
And the, and the registrars.
All right, so at this point, I think we're all set. If I could have a motion to go into executive session.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second, you know, maybe take five or 10 minutes to get back there. I know we've been sitting here since 6 o'clock. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, we'll be in executive.